The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common sense.
Will Stanley perform the case review? A true love agenda, change of secrets or mobile items?
I need to approve the agenda and bolster.
This way.
Any discussion on their say aye?
Uh.
opposed motion hearing. We'll need two announcements. We will start with the student representative update.
Alright, so pretty much recap of what happened since last school board meeting. We had the student council at a leadership summit. I think that was all of those of the at their high school. Pretty much we went in there, we discussed leadership and what it meant to be a leader, what our definition of leadership was, then we got into groups of other schools. And they've talked about with them, what are we define leadership and how we got involved in our schools. Overall, I think this was a great, very good experience for us, especially for underclassmen who may not be as experienced as sort of sub- us upperclassmen. We also went with a junior high student council. And they got to kind of hang around with us and see how things happen at the high school. We also did a lead ranking for community service. I was not able to make it that. But from what I heard, someone was disappointed that they did not get like any yard work or anything from the students during the year. So they reached out to the school on Facebook. And so student council took it upon themselves to help them, and I think they had a pretty good turnout for that.
We've been trying to keep the school spirit high after we had such a good experience at homecoming. So we had a Halloween costume contest. There's pictures on the waiter slide, but there was a lot of participants, especially with it being the first year of having it, and there was a lot of different costume ideas. That was a fun way to celebrate the fun holiday and keep students engaged. And we also brought back Panther warmups. If you haven't heard of those, it's where during PPT, which is between first and second block, students enjoy apple cider and hot chocolate with their classmates as a fun way to enjoy the holiday and fall season.
And upcoming things, the Rotary Winter Wonderland lights. So typically NHS will take care of this, we'll set up like sometime in November, and then we'll work the booth at Winter Wonderland site a couple of days during the year. This year, it's going to be different because most of the NHS members are actually in student council, so student council is going to be doing this. And last year NHS, I wasn't able to make it when they were working the booth, but during the setup, I had a fine experience. But apparently the workers there were rude or did not give the members working there a good experience, so they weren't too thrilled to go back there.
We also are going to schedule meeting here soon to plan our holiday initiatives. We have always done advising door decorating contests. Advising groups are all different grades of high school, so you can collaborate with some kids that you would normally have classes or be with. The more Panther warmups, of course. We discussed potential of holiday cards to community members and holiday dress updates, but none of that is final yet because we haven't met as a group, and those were just some ideas. There's another slide with pictures on it. Yeah, so this is from our costume contest. We had the Kool-Aid crew, a unicorn, and a little bit more of a scary costume. So any questions?
I have a question about Rotary Winter Wonderland. So are you folks, it's already set up and it opens quite real soon, but are you guys going to be going and volunteering for food collection?
Yes, we are scheduled for monthly December 26th, and I believe the student council international club and it's open to NHS too for volunteer.
Okay, so the 26th, okay. Yeah, if you have any other comments about feeling like you weren't treated well, I would appreciate if you would talk to me sometime afterwards. I'm a member of Rotary, and I, that's really important feedback, and I would like to know more.
Thank you.
Okay.
I had a question about the feedback was given on Facebook, is that given on our school Facebook page, or is it just put out there and people are loving it, they want to know about somebody being disappointed they didn't get service done?
I think originally it was just someone generically posting on their Facebook page, then someone forwarded it to Ms. Rostman, who's in charge of student council, and she thought it would be a good idea for us to go out there and help them.
Yeah, it was a comment on our school Facebook page. I think it said something along the lines of, sure wish I could have some help with their yard. So it's a really good opportunity for us to be able to reach out and do something special for community member.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, the next thing, did you notice this?
So we get our first night of parent teacher conferences last Thursday, and the second date is tomorrow for four to seven thirty PM.
Okay. Alright, meaning to celebrate the academic spotlight in the high school.
I told Melissa she has to do all the talking, is that what's her life?
You'll have your fun.
Alright, so physical career and technical education is the spotlight for this month. Let's go to the next slide then. This was the newsletter submission from our CTE teachers, but I just want to recap about what CTE Academy is. So there are four teachers, myself, Mr. Jordan Rayburn, Mr. Hatfield, and then Ms. Lindsay Meisner, who teach two different classes, so junior career and financial literacy. Junior career and financial literacy, and then in that class, they do have to complete three different job shadows. We do have one student presenting on her job shadow that she completed last month. And then senior capstone, they, those students then get placed in internship placement locally or, you know, close by the city and other towns. Alright, so we really want to focus today and let the school board members know, like, what are we doing with our early release Wednesday times and in our PLC? So right now, on the left, I know it's a little small, but you should have a packet as well that I created, the school board members do, of some of the topics I'm going to talk about. So we use our employability skills rubric. This is part of the district goal as well. And the first page you're going to see is a student evaluation. Now, these are eval, these are real evaluations. I de-identified the student so that you can see how we're utilizing them. So the first one is a student evaluation. They rate themselves on a scale from one to four, one being minimal and four being advanced. Our goal is that all seniors will have a rating of at least a three proficient by the end of the school year. So the second one that you're going to see is the employer evaluation. Out of the twelve students that I specifically had, eleven of the employers turned in their evaluation. We are missing one, and I'm having a meeting with them on two to eighteen, so I'm hoping to get that from them. The third one is a teacher evaluation rating. Now, you can see that our six topics that we're covering are work ethic, self-management, communication skills, teamwork collaboration, willingness to learn, thinking skills, and resilience. Now, I did this a little different than my counterparts, and I think that they might do this the next time that we rate them, because the students, the evaluators, and the teachers rate the students three times throughout the semester. So this is our first evaluation that we're getting this data from. And I completed the rating for my students, and then I really wanted to create a student teacher conference within this. So they, the student actually put why they thought the teacher, myself, rated them this score. And it really led to a good discussion of discrepancies between their initial evaluation versus what I see in the classroom. The last page that you're going to see is just a spreadsheet with a lot of numbers, but this is where we're really trying to get our data. So we take student K, for instance, and we put their self grade in each of those six categories, the employer and then the teacher. And then we average them out to try to figure out what six category or which category or categories are the lowest. So then we can create lesson plans based on those lowest areas of the employability skills. So the lowest ones that we've had so far were, and this was, the spreadsheet is only four students out of my twelve. I didn't want to bore you with all of those numbers. So resilience is one thing that we're going to be working on, and then willingness to learn. So the last two pages were two lesson plans that we actually created from this data information from the first evaluation to try to include work ethic, self-management in the first one, and then the second one, we were focusing on resilience and willing to learn slash find something new. So that's just kind of what we're doing with our employability skills rubric. You know, that was a lot quick. Do you have questions on that specific information? Alright, so as you can see, the CTE Academy has been in session for quite a few years. We really want to still spotlight our students and the work that they're trying to accomplish, which also falls into this employability skills checklist. So our first student is Vanessa Pellock. She is going to talk about her job shadow experience that she did this last month.
Alright, so I had the opportunity to go to the Marshfield Health System and watch a C-section. So the first part of it was setting up the job shadow. So I'm lucky enough, I am a nursing assistant at the hospital, so I kind of had a little in. So first I contacted my manager and explained to her that I had a class, that I needed to do a job shadow, and that I wanted to look into the birthing center. And so she was kind enough to reach out to that manager and gave her my information and told her the whole situation. So then I was able to set up a date and actually go and see one. So the top three things that I saw was honestly just a C-section in itself, like the procedure, like all the incisions, and then baby coming out. Like it was, it was just cool. And then getting to watch the epidural, oh yeah, it was really hard for me to see. I don't like needles and the long, so I think it was really cool to see something that, like, I don't want to say didn't sit well with me, but was a little hard for me to watch. So I could see like, this is some things that I will be seeing and get to experience that. And then the aftercare, so my mom that I got to see actually developed gestational diabetes. So the baby had like problems regulating her temperature, and we decided to do extra stuff with like her glucose and all that stuff. So it's cool to see a different procedure. And then how it influenced me, I'm definitely considering more like in the neonatal intensive care unit or pediatrics or even in the birthing center. So it kind of has me wanting to explore more. Oh, and then that's the picture of the nurse I got to shadow with. Her name was Emily, and then we're actually in the operating room, no we use anything. So then going off what Miss Anderson was talking about, employability skills. So the first one is work ethic. So I had to arrive on time because that would not look good. And then I also had to try and like arrive at a decent time back. Going into the next one, like communication skills, I had to be professional with the mom and like try not to say things that I wanted. And also it goes with like meeting with my teachers. So normally job shadows, you're supposed to get done around nine fifteen, nine thirty, back around ten fifteen to the end of PPT, straight for second block. But all my teachers were kind enough to let me stay longer. So I think I got back around twelve thirty-ish, so it was good, and then I was able to catch up on all my work. But then teamwork, I had to work with the staff and ask questions to help me learn. And I had a really good, I don't know what you call it, like person to shadow, because she answered all my questions and she made it really fun. And then willingness to learn. So almost all this was new for me, so it was kind of like, I had to go in with an open mind and being ready to see these new things. And then thinking, thinking skills, I kind of tied this into HIPAA. So when I came back to school, I was all excited, but you know, I really can't say much. I can say like he, she, but I can't give anything else. But then resilience, it was all new situations, so I kind of had to be prepared and go into it with an open mind, so. Any questions?
Alright, baby.
Honestly, I have one question of evaluation.
Absolutely.
Is part, are you, do you already have, or are you thinking of developing some type of tool for the employer? When I look at the scoring, like the employer's scores are like significantly higher than how the person's rating themselves for the teacher, and it doesn't surprise me because employers probably thinking, well, I want this kid not to get a good grade, you know, I mean, and like.
That's what I thought at first, but we also have to think of a positive, that we do have students who have some behavior issues, and they're not being punctual to the school and maybe not turning things in. But if these employers are being truthful and honest, which we do meet with them, it's also like we need to think of this positive that these students are making these good choices, they are being punctual on time. I mean, I can tell you that one of my students is rated pretty low, but his internship supervisor could not say anything better about him, about how awesome he's doing and hands-on work and everything. So I do understand that, and we, we actually had something a little different with our supervisors to evaluate, and we only did it once, and it was at the end of the semester. And we thought, okay, well, this is great, we're getting this feedback, but then what do we do with it? So right now, we're piloting this. We would like to maybe, we have this as a Google forum as well for our students to fill out, but for just viewing purposes, I thought it would be easier to do on paper. I don't know, I mean, if you have other suggestions, we can think of some things, but you just think like the scale is.
No, I'm just wondering if there's a complimentary tool that goes to the employer about how to rate it? So that everyone is like reading, like everyone's, everyone has the same definition, or at least there is a definition of what that means.
So we do have a letter that we give to each of the employers, and then we also meet with them. Most of the students placements, we haven't met with right away in October because we don't want to do those visits too soon. So I'm assuming that maybe our numbers will be a little different as the midway and possibly the end of the year come into play, but I think that's a good point that we just need to make sure that they're.
One thing I noticed, as I was, so we used to give it out at the end of the year, one thing I noticed, and that's obviously there's some confusion on the form, but some of the employers will defaultly rate them before if they haven't experienced that. I haven't seen this getting targeted, so I'm circling the form. So that just kind of goes along. We maybe need to further develop that discussion, but sometimes they truly don't see it. So we as a group kind of talk about like, how much are we evaluating the first time versus the last time? We obviously want to see growth, but we might be realistic too.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what you do with them, but if it doesn't impact their grade, it's more of just a learning opportunity. I think an employer knowing that is also really helpful, because I think without knowing it, you assume it might, and you just might like the kid, and you might not. And who knows who's filling it out at the employer too, and you know, it could be, I mean, yeah, I mean, who knows who's actually filling out? So just a couple of thoughts, when I saw that they all rated, that was just awesome. And you're absolutely right, it could just be a very different experience, and I'm like, huh.
Can I point something out?
Yeah.
So this conversation among professionals about like how to rate this, this is what early release time process is doing. So you get the four teachers in a room like, whoa, everybody's a four, cool, like, but they're late every day, it's a while. You know, like, and so now it's now in a room with time, without students waiting for us, we can discuss that, so what does that mean? And how do we, how do we adjust to that before, be like, I know there's a problem, but I get students that gotta teach all the time instead of.
Yeah. Awesome. And the discussion that we had with those four, you know, the example I gave you that hopefully the students are representing themselves very well outside of these walls, we want to have a business meeting when we have our CTE summer meeting, where they come in and we talk about these six topics and really get the nitty-gritty of like, what are you seeing, not just with our Pittsfield students, but all your entry-level employees? What are they missing? What are types of things that we can do in the classroom as well? So piloting here, we're trying to take it slow, but we appreciate your feedback on that.
Well, and I mean, I would just add that, do you want them to rate it against how, what you want the employee, your student, or how they would rate it against for their other employees? Because I mean, the real life is as an employer, you don't have as high standards as at one point maybe you did in every role. I mean, it's just, I know the way it is right now.
Over live streaming.
So because we want our students to, to, to measure against the standard we have, it just might be helpful, because I think that that's kind of like, I mean, sometimes there are people that are just thankful someone showed up.
And that's why we're really are focusing on the student and staff communication, not that we're, you know, not taking into account what the evaluator is saying, but you know, it is a short amount of time that they are seeing them, especially now since we just had them new in October. So we're hoping to get a little bit more information from them as time goes on.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Alright, so our last one is Logan Fennel. He is doing a youth apprenticeship, and he's going to talk to you all about that.
Alright, so I'm currently a machinist at Asterator Industries over in Marshfield. In 2018, I upgraded to a building over in Marshfield, and before that, it was ran out of someone's old garage that they renovated into trap. So it's a pretty big jump, as you can see, that's our building, and it really doesn't do it justice. It's really nice on the inside, it's huge. And mainly focus on aerospace and defense parts, and we do computer numeric control, which is a type of machining where it's ran by computers, and you have to program it. And then we also do metrology, which is the study of measurement. So every part that we do is inspected and for it goes to our customers. So yeah, this summer I did some Metal Mania classes, so I would know a little bit more about the field. So we started with the basics, so we do manual machining, which we actually teach that here in Pittsville too. I just didn't get to take a class last year. And they pretty much walked us through it, and we made a couple of parts on manual machines. And then once we became experts on that, we got to bump up to C and C machines, and we did some programming and setup, and that was our whole class, that picture. So as you can see, it's a lot like Pittsville. We only had, I think we started with ten kids, and then over the summers, so I think last year there was a couple of kids that missed a couple of classes, so they only had to take like one or two parts of the class, and then our class got cut in half and maybe we had five people in the end, and so it was a lot like being here in Pittsville or you got small class, so I think it was pretty hands-on, and I learned a lot from them. And then my job shadows. So I went to IMS, which is like a rival machine shop. So I went there, and they make a lot of bigger parts, so we mainly focus on aerospace, like I said, and they do very small parts, no, no parts that are over probably like foot wide or foot tall, but we, we could. Mainly because if you're doing parts that are more precise, they're a lot smaller, more money to be made, which brings people right in. And then you have IMS, which makes very large parts, so I guess you're on the way opposite end of the spectrum, and you're doing very, very, very large parts that are, can be thirty feet long or a couple tons of weight where you have to load it into the machine or the crane. That is also can cost a lot of money. So I went there, and they do a lot of hyperduction, and they gave me a tour, and then the guy that I shadowed, his name was Steve, and he was showing me how he programs his electronics machine, which is completely conversational. So back in the day, when you'd have to program a machine, you would have to write all the script by hand of what the machine would do. And nowadays, you can pretty much just answer yes or no questions and they'll program the part for you, so it's gotten a lot easier over the years, especially when you're doing pretty simple parts that aren't very precise, you can use conversational. And then I went to Mid State Technical College for my second shadow. And from there, I met up with the teacher of the class I took during the summer, so it was a good class reunion. And I went there and he showed me all the new machines that they're getting, because they're in 2024, they're moving their whole machine shop from Rapids to Point. So he's showing me all the things they're getting in the mail that they are unboxing, and you know, the teachers have to learn how to use them first before they show the students. So he showed me a couple of parts that they were making, and then we talked about what I would be doing after high school, which Mid State is pretty much where I want to go. And then overall, seeing all the machine shops that I have gone to over the years kind of helps you see what things that every machine shop that has is unique, like how every shop is, does something specific or something you like, and then you can compare all of them and see which one of that's possibly working on. And then I brought two parts with me that we can pass around, so this is the first part that I ever programmed and ran. It's a larger Lego, and I made two of them, and they did snap together, but I gave the other one to my friend. This is a part that I got from work, the scrap parts, that means that it was out of tolerance. And this part, that was pretty tight tolerance, which is how big or how small a part can be before it won't fit or won't work for what it has to do. And this part is a patented design I sold for every oil rig in the world, so every oil rig will need one, and I couldn't tell you what it does. I really don't know, but it is pretty cool. It was made on a lathe with milling capabilities, and then it was put on a high-axis mill to do these little holes in the bottom. And then if you really want to get technical on this Lego here, you can see all the milling marks on the inside from the tool that I used to make it. Does anyone have any questions?
This morning?
Went over a lot, a small amount of time.
When you took the Metal Mania class, did you get Technical College credit for it?
Yep, so all of the classes that I took can be used when I want to go to MSTC. So what I was told by the teacher was when I come back to do those classes, I can pretty much skip the mornings and just go in the afternoon, which is really nice, because I'm not much of a morning person.
He's gonna work mom right in the morning?
Yeah, so it's pretty nice, especially with that, you can do it at like the age of fourteen, I'm pretty sure that's the first time you can take it, and I think that would be pretty nice for most kids to do, because it's free, and if you go there and you do it and you're like, wow, this is the worst thing I've ever done, and you know that you maybe want to switch something else like welding or do something completely different, there's no cost to you besides the gas to get there. And then you also, we got to tour a lot of places, so we went to Martin Machine, Asterator Industries where I work, so that was pretty funny. And then we went to IMS too, so that was the second time I toured it, but I went more in depth on my job shadow. And then Martin Machine, that's in Stevens Point, is actually really interesting. They do kind of same thing we do over at my work, but they're a really ungodly clean shop. You have to, every time you walk into the door, there's kind of like an airlock, and then you have to put your feet into this machine that puts plastic around your shoes. That's how clean this is. And then, yeah, it's their whole metrology lab, so when they measure parts, their metrology lab is ventilated, so all the air that's in it has to be circulated at a certain temperature. In every square foot of the room, the air is circulated a hundred times a minute. So all of that is really filtered and it's like clean air, if that makes any sense, so. Any other questions?
Thanks, John. And it's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then you're gonna move to the panel president.
Dr. Watson.
Alright, we actually kind of tricked Dan Rayburn coming today. He thinks he's presenting on Hall of Fame. He may still, he wants to. He may still, he wants to.
Oh, I'm good.
But I think probably most of the people in the room know that this year was the first class that was conducted into our PHS Athletic Hall of Fame. And Dan was kind of the guy who came up with the idea for our Hall of Fame and really was the driving force between or behind making it happen. And so it was suggested that Dan would be a great person to receive the Panther Pride Award. So I'm just going to read what the award says for Dan there. So it says, "For extraordinary service to Pittsville School District as creator, planner, and developer of our Athletic Hall of Fame. Dan's efforts to conceive, plan, and execute the Hall of Fame while in induction ceremony enhanced community pride and built stronger connections between the school district and its distinguished alumni. Dan's service to the district and community exceeded expectations and reflects well on himself and the athletic department. We are lucky to have Mr. Dan Raiver Jr. on the Pittsville team."
But I'm not presenting, so I don't know what to say.
I also just was totally convinced this, Todd would notice, but as Athletic Director each year, we are through the kinds of Athletic Directors Association, we have the opportunity to nominate or choose someone for the Distinguished Service Award. And in the WADA provides a plaque that we can give them. And actually, kind of very early in this process, I was going to pick Dan anyway for a lot of the other things he does, including all the coaching he does here in the district. And just, you know, really too much stuff to even try to list. But Dan also gets a plaque here for his other event.
I wouldn't do it if I didn't want to do it.
So Dan, he came up to me in the district office this morning and I could have played a cruel joke on him because he came up and said, do I need slides or anything for tonight?
Yeah.
I thought about saying just roll five or six together. That would have been cool. And so I said, no, that's five. He had a long conference. So thank you, Dan.
All right. I had no idea. So thanks. And so my wife wanted to come, but we're working late. Thanks again. I appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move on to the Veterans Day celebration.
So I actually have the Veterans Day celebration. I have some photos in my district administrator update. So if we could, we can just move into that.
Absolutely. Move on to the district administration.
So I did want to give you an update. Two board meetings ago, I did a follow the board that we were reviewing our hotspot usage. That the hotspots had been, we entered a contract prior to COVID because of the virtual instruction component. Upon review, what we realized is that we were paying approximately $23,000 a year for use of the hotspots. And after going through and micro structured to the different distributors, it was determined that we could utilize the KJTs versus the MiFi's, which were through US cellular, were significantly cheaper. We were able to go down in the number of devices that we kept and ended up just completing that. And we ended up with a cost savings bonus, $20,000 a year through that restructuring. The nice component is, is that if we ever were to have a need for hotspots and we're not going to for multiple hotspots, it would cost us nothing to just reenter and start the contract up again. So the reason you see the KJTs, where we have six that are US cellular and six that are Verizon, that's something that is now the capability with KJTs that wasn't prior. They could only get one, one of the cellular services through. And for some folks, depending on what area of the district they're located in, they couldn't get US Cellular or Verizon. So we got six of each, which would mean it's likely we would be able to get it to wherever the service worked in there. So. Safety and security update. We are upgrading the fire alarm system. That is currently about 80% finished. And Dan told me today that the work will be finished over Christmas break. That'll be a completely integrated fire alarm system. The digital mapping grant, we did get the DOJ award for digital mapping of all of our campus. That'll take place. That'll be shared with law enforcement, both with the Pittsville Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and with dispatch. We'll all have digital maps of the buildings that have been advanced. So today was our comprehensive security audit. So we met this morning, members of the administration, Chief Door, met with environmental health and safety consultants from CISA 10. These folks happen to be, we're being CISA 5, but you're able, the Cisas in state are wonderful. Some of them have areas of expertise that they're more than willing to point us in the right direction. So if CISA 5 doesn't have a service, they'll tell us which CISA we should reach out to. So these folks were on a CISA 10. And they came in this morning and they met with the administration and Chief Door for about an hour, asked us questions. They watched the drop off this morning at the buildings. And then they went through the buildings and took photos. And with Dan, spent the morning walking around, taking pictures, asking questions about different components of both the structure and operations and then the student movement. In about three weeks, they're going to complete a pretty comprehensive report. They're going to share that with us. So then that'll be part of our review that we'll go through and it'll identify areas that we're doing things well and some areas that they've identified as areas that we can shore up our safety. So it was, it was an interesting process. Dan said it was very important. And it's nice to bring in an outside organization to do that because we know what we know. And you're always thinking, we do a pretty good job here. We do. But it's nice to get in those extra set of eyes that they came in. They'll give us that report in three weeks. We'll eventually give a report to the board after we get the information back. Another component we're adding in, Emily Kusbeliak went to a conference and had become familiarized with this Speak Up, Speak Out program. It's at no cost. It's free. And what it allows is it's a 24-hour confidential tip line that's made by the state with students, parents, and community members. If they see something suspicious or concerning behaviors, there's that anonymity piece that they can make a report and then that's shared to local law enforcement. If there's concerning, you know, if there's concerning behavior or something that just doesn't seem right, because that was something we talked about this morning with the consultants was that we think we do a pretty good job here in Pittsville is talking about that proactive approach of, you know, unless you're going to lock down campus that bars on the windows and metal detectors, you're going to have people in your buildings, is that you need to be proactive. The people that are in there need to be aware of their surroundings. And if they see something that's a mess or, you know, our staff are wonderful. If they see students struggling, they talk to the student, they refer to their counseling partner. So those are all components. And this is just another aspect of that. So can you guys, do you want to move over to the other chairs?
I think I would.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. I'll give you a time to.
Okay.
We have some limitations in this.
Yeah.
So last Monday at our professional learning day, we did a SWOT analysis with all staff that day. So that was all district staff. The only staff that did not participate were our paraprofessionals because they weren't contracted that day. But I'm going to be with them on Wednesday of this week during our early release time to do the activity with them during that timeframe. So for those that aren't familiar with that, the SWOT analysis, you go through individuals in organizational issue, strengths, your weaknesses, your opportunities, and then threats. And the administrative team did this in August. We did this activity. And we wanted to have staff go through and do this. I listed some of the highlights. So these were on a sheet. How this worked was there were giant poster sheets in the Fine Arts Center in four areas. We introduced the activity and then the administrators left the Fine Arts Center and left the staff in. And everybody had a sheet of dots, little sticker dots. So what they did is the first person up would write, you know, it could be, you know, strengths could be small class sizes. And then future folks, if they agree with that, they'd just put a dot next to it. So you don't have to have people do a check mark instead of really do dots. So then what you look for in something like this are trends. And the dots are visual. Like when you look at the sheet, you can see a bunch of dots. So full transparency, I quote what was on the sheet up on here. And, you know, we had talked about running the activity like this. The idea is just to get feedback. And it's open and it's candid. And one of the reasons we left is we wanted it to be in that environment where they felt confident to be able to just put what they were feeling. And we broke this down. I did not list everything that was on the sheets. What I did is I picked the things that had the most dots on each of the sheets, the top four or five on the sheet. So you can go through and see that some of these things, not surprising, you know, the strengths are small class sizes, quality educators, staff that care about their kids. The weaknesses, too many initiatives. I would say that's probably something pretty common you're going to hear in most school districts around the state. You'll hear about the too many initiatives. I'm going to put in a plug for strategic planning because a lot of times when you hear about too many initiatives, it's that things aren't tied together and focused. I think, tomorrow, praise for Mary Ann, I think it was more of a shotgun blast, a semi rifle blast. Is that more targeted as far as what, what are we focused on? So what would we use this for? We compare this with some of the stuff we see from our administrative analysis, which actually there were some common themes between the administrator's analysis and what we came up with. And what it does is it, it probably confirms some things that, you know, this is something we probably weren't aware of, something that maybe staff are stressed with or staff, you know, some things that maybe we didn't anticipate. And then what our job would be to do is to look at, I'm maybe I'm looking at the threats. We talked about it in our admin one, is look at the threats and try to eliminate what the threats are. If there's things we can remove, and I don't mean eliminate in terms of like, you know, in a, in a sense of like making people disappear when we got talking like, are there some things on there that we can, maybe it's a lack of communication, there's things that we can shore up. And then the opportunities. It was very interesting is there were some opportunities on, on from staff that had popped up when we as an administrative team also created a document this summer with ideas to attract and retain staff, which is the problem around the state with, you know, the teaching profession. Well, some of the things that staff listed on opportunities, they, for the ways to retain and attract staff under opportunities, they'd listed some specific ideas. Well, some of those ideas were things that the admin team had listed on their document about potential ways to retain staff and attract staff. So, so it's a part, it is a picture, a piece of the puzzle that we're looking at here as far as moving forward into that strategic planning phase. And then useful stuff during the, during the course of it, you're going to hear me talk about the fitness center later. And you can see the fitness center hours X has popped up as one of the top activities or opportunities for staff. I like the, another one of the opportunities that was interesting was students getting able to participate in multiple activities simultaneously. And they had mentioned, I think the notes specifically, you know, we're a small school. And I think our advisors do a wonderful job and our coaches are making sure that they know that students are involved in multiple things. They might be in the play and they might have practice. And that's something we have to do in a community our size. Threats, extra busy work, that's something we're always conscious of. You know, is that what are tasks that need to be done? And we try, I think we do a pretty good job of trying to eliminate what those things that might be just busy work. Sometimes there's procedural stuff. But, you know, things like this kind of tell you, there's always work. And this is part of like a 360. A lot of organizations don't do activities like this or give emails. The reason is, it's getting feedback stuff. It's, you know, it's difficult to ask for feedback. And then the thing is, when you're asking for feedback, then you need to do something with it when you ask for feedback. It can't be just, well, we're listening and then nothing changes or we're not receptive to that. So the important piece is what do you do with the feedback after you get it? So we have any questions about the SWOT process? I think from talking to staff, I think they found it. I know we have a few staff in here that I think they found it beneficial. Sometimes just kind of get things out and have that process. But I heard good things from folks about being able to participate in the activity. Okay, so a state, state grant, which was administered through CISA, allowed us to double our school nursing hours for the remainder of the school year at no cost to the district movement from 11 hours with Ms. Martinevich to 22, which was fantastic. And the irony in this was about a month ago, Gina and I had met and talked. And Gina, you know, had said, well, my wish is that, you know, eventually if we're able to up our hours, she wanted to learn. I said, Gina, what would a sweet spot be for the number of hours? Because she still does work, you know, at the hospital. And she said, you know, somewhere between 21 and 24 hours. So totally didn't plan that, but it allowed us to get right in that sweet spot. So she was, it was a win-win. She's wonderful. And it's been great having her in the building on a more consistent basis. So. District leadership met with a data specialist from CISA 5 last week to break down our state report card. The embargoed version was out and actually the embargo is over tomorrow. So the public release of the report cards will be tomorrow. There's stuff contained in that release that won't be in the public version. It's a little more, the data is disseminated a little bit in more detail that could be identifiable with certain student groups. If you have very small demographics, it's easy to identify student groups. So that public release won't have all of the information we have, but it was very informative. The state report card is not user friendly. Wise Dash in general is not user friendly where you, where you look at student data. And it's hard to decipher what exactly they use to go into the scores. And she did a really nice job of kind of helping us break things down. And she had looked at some of our historical data here in the Pittsville School District to help us, you know, look, look for some things. And what will happen is after the public release, we're looking at December, we will bring a presentation, breaking down the report card for the board and do that. I will tell you, CISA, this was part of our, in our CISA membership, you know, part of the CISA consortium, we're allowed eight days per year. Every district is where you can do your, build your own professional learning or supports through CISA, whatever they offer. They give you eight days. So you can do half days, you can do full days, combination, up to eight days. This was, we used two hours of that for this, too. So if we have some area that we want to maybe do some strat training, you can reach out to CISA. If they don't have someone at CISA 5 that would fit the bill for what it is that we're looking for, they would put some touch with CISA 6 or 10. And then we can break those folks in and they can either do virtual training or onsite training up to eight days per year. It's a very valuable resource. All right. So the Panther Community Fitness Center, I'm going to ask, I see Mark is in here. I don't believe was potentially going to make it. I don't see Lee here. But so the community fitness center, the membership has plummeted over the last four years. It peaked at around 85 memberships and it was down to currently to 38. And I think Lee said to me that he's not sure if those are even active memberships. There's 38 memberships, but he's not sure how many people are actually using the fitness center. I have told multiple folks, this, this is the topic since moving back to Pittsville, that I have been, I've received more phone calls and didn't stop in straight about this than any other topic. Hands down was the fitness center and specifically the hours and the accessibility of it. So when you're hearing that, I wanted to know more. And I met with a couple of the community members that were members. And then I reached out and I talked to administrators, talked to Mark, who's the athletic director, talked to Lee. And I would say we kind of get a picture of where things were, where, where are we going or where do we want to be? What's the purpose of the facility? I mean, it's a beautiful facility in a community our size. And the number one thing that kept popping up was the hours. The hours were restrictive for folks based upon the work schedules or whatever else. And we ended up looking at other local districts, Stratford, other districts our size that had fitness centers to kind of see what are you doing? And what we found is all of them had significantly longer hours of activity than we did. I believe Stratford's and Mark Correctment Row are like 4:30 in the morning until 9:30 PM at night, seven days a week. They have access. People that are members have access. So what it is, is they have a FOB, they're assigned a FOB and have FOB access to the center at any point. I know there are concerns, people, you know, people that start concerns about safety and security. The reality is they're coming in with a FOB. We have cameras everywhere. It's, it's a controlled environment. And I adjust a little bit, but not when I say that. Typically, people who buy fitness memberships are not signed enough to come in and do criminal-like behavior. And there's easier ways to do that than to sign up for a fitness membership and come in and work hard enough facilities. So I have very little concern talking to the other districts. They've had zero issues with anybody doing any damage. If anything, they actually leave the place nicer than when they come in. They clean things and take care of it. One of the deals with having expanded access, you have to have a bathroom. There are certain things required. And we happened to have that. What we deciphered through our discussion was, is that the commons area out here outside the administrative offices has a bathroom. And effectively, with all doors secured, if someone was coming into the fitness center after hours, they would have access to the lobby, but that would be it because everything else is restricted. They could get in bathrooms, but they wouldn't have access down the CTE hallway. They wouldn't have access into the administrative offices or down into the elementary. Maybe they wouldn't have, they wouldn't be able to get access there. It would be restricted effectively to the fitness center and the hallway getting down to the gym doors. So, so that really wouldn't be a huge concern. There wouldn't be any additional access there if we were able to. There wouldn't be any additional access there if we were able to assign FOBs to the members. So what are some recommendations we came up with? As we're moving forward, would be to expand the hours significantly to the center as far as access for folks who were, you know, secondary or just within time presence itself that they wanted to get in. It was historically, and Mark wants to get correct, it was blocked off during after-school times because of the athletic teams potentially using the weight room. Is that correct, like the weight room area?
That was the idea.
That was the idea. The reality is that that isn't really restrictive. There, if one or two people were in there along with the teams, that would happen and it's not really, it doesn't cause a problem with who they're who. It just, it was one of those things that it makes sense to think about it that way, but it really wasn't any issue. So talking about allowing that access. Honestly, the biggest point of discussion that we haven't really settled on yet would be, do we allow access during the school day? Because that would be, not being candid with you, if I didn't tell you that there would be some mild concerns, but because we have our rubber students who are traveling the hallways during the course of day, heading over for courses down to the CTE wing. So there's student traffic in the hallways is during the school day. The other schools that I mentioned do allow it during the school day into the fitness center in the area, but that was one where I wasn't quite sure how we kind of landed on that as a yet. So some of these things are still to be worked on. Because what we want to do is, we want to get a group together. We wanted to do some of this work ahead of time because, to be frank, we knew some of these things were not negotiable. Let me, early on, I kind of realized, we're gonna need to expand the hours. We need to have longer hours and accessibility to get kind of a base, to get the committee together or then to kind of hammer out what are the details gonna work like. Periodic training sessions, that was something that, you know, Stratford and Edgar are two of the ones that I thought had a pretty good setup with the way they run it. And they offer training sessions for members periodically where they might come in and do, you know, some kind of a sort hit training thing where they would offer a little session as kind of a partnership. You have like members or coaches who would be willing to go in and do training sessions. And that was something that instead it was very hot for our members. Access for retired PCSD employees, that's something, you know, we were talking about. We're talking hard about how we recognize and show appreciation for our people. And, you know, something that we had talked about was having expanded access for, you retire from PCSD, that you get a membership, a courtesy membership to come in and, you know, we need to have. Full access for PSD coaches. So right now what happens is, coaches receive, if you have a coach who's not a teacher or an employee, a full-time employee, they get access during the season of their coaching. So if you're about, if you're about to your football coach or a football coach, you would have your, the access to the fitness center would be during that time for that season. What we talked about everybody that we landed on was, is that if you're coaching for the school district, is that we don't like limiting, that you can have the access during the season? Because a lot of programs are doing fitness and weightlifting in the offseason. We want coaches to be able to have that access and continue to work out, once again, show our appreciation. So right now, we currently charge $108. That's on the way low side when compared to other memberships. This is very formal. I would challenge you to find a fitness membership for under $350, $400 probably in any other place. So we had talked about raising that fee because of the expanded access, but also, you know, incorporating some of that training in there, equipment maintenance and upgrades. It would be something we could do where we could have a fund where we establish the money to be able to maintain the equipment. That would be, I think the idea was that this would be something that would operate in the black and would not be a cost to the district on a regular basis. Membership drive, something we had talked about is when we do get this hammered out, is to really give this out to the public and let them know that we've, you know, we listen, we have some changes. And then use our social media platform and school messenger to get that out. Try to do a membership drive, maybe with a discount if you sign up by January 1st for a membership. So then our goal would be those changes would be implemented by January 1st, 2023, the latest January versus what we're doing now. So there was a lot more mark to it. I mean, you've been a part of many of those conversations and I have a just panel who obviously are invested in this as well.
And I think you covered it well. I think one thing we talked about with access during the school day is we just have to, like for example, just fitness and weight training class when they're in the weight room. And when they came in, we'd have to be aware of that and that might have to be signed and have access, but not.
So Mark had actually just reminded me of something. So the one component, most of the folks who use the fitness center also use the weight room. Okay, so the one component, you are able to utilize a FOB to get, if we give FOB, and the FOBs can be assigned to only work on certain doors. So them can assign the FOB to only open, you know, the main entrance outside the fitness center and then the doors going down the hallway we work on. You get to the gym is where the problem is, to get into the weight room. Currently, right now, to get into the weight room, you have to, you'd have to have a key. We're not big on signing out keys because keys get lost and keys get not turned back in. So I had asked Dan Giles to explore what it would cost. There's a FOB access into the weight room. So six feet away, that first set of doors, I'd asked Dan to explore how much it would cost to continue that wire and put a FOB access just on the first door, that first set of doors going into the gym. In the short term, there would be ways to just key that, the first door open. It would stay closed, but it would be keyed open so that you could, you could have access into the gym. So that would be something in short term addressed. But that was the only, we mapped this out to say, okay, what are roadblocks or what are threats? And that was the one thing that we came up with this, and that's a minor one in all honesty. There could have been much worse. Access to the gym, you know, we talked, we didn't really have any major concerns about that. You know, about having access to the gym and people would, because if someone's in the weight room lifting weights and they want to come out and do a couple of wind sprints or whatever on the gym, so what, right? I mean, and it comes down to, you address the issues when they come up. We have security cameras, we would have FOB record of them coming in the building. So if there's a problem, the thing I don't like doing is taking away access already for what might happen if someone violates it. You know, we give access, we have responsible people and if something happens, we're able to access our cameras and our FOB data to be able to discover what happened, so.
So I have a question. The expanded hours, currently all of our hours are staffed.
Yeah.
Would these always still be staffed?
No, the staffing would remain in that, thank you for bringing that up to make sure I clarify that. So the staffing, the hours would still, the people that were staffing, if they chose, if they still wanted to, could still do those hours because we're still gonna need people, we want people to be able to check the equipment and do those things. We would not expand the staffing to those hours. So there would be a significant amount of unsupervised hours. And that's the same in the other districts that do this, it's unsupervised. It's the, they're coming in, they would sign a liability waiver. They do require, both of the schools I mentioned require them to watch a training video, kind of a, you know, safe training video. But, you know, there's a certain piece of assumption or risk that they're taking if they're gonna come in, you know, weight training and do the cardio stuff on their own. But it would not expand the staffing. If anything, it would remain the same depending on, you know, some of the folks who do it now had expressed that they, they're doing it because they want to give access to other people. And if they didn't need to do that, they may not want to do that, so. Does that make sense?
Yes, I have one other question. How much do we charge for, if we're giving them?
Five dollars.
Okay, so that's another next one.
Five, five dollars per for FOBs. And if they lost one, they would pay a five dollar replacement fee. This is all stuff that we put into an updated policy.
Our district's one there, because ours is.
Yeah, I didn't get into that. I could find it, I'll tell.
Another question. The fitness center was established via a federal Department of Education for a light physical activity grant.
Yeah.
Are there any federal strings related to how much we can charge and all of that?
My understanding is, Mary, that's a great question. Justin gave me notice is that there was a sunset clause on that and we've expired that so that there are no more strings attached to what we do with the facilities, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Yep, that's correct. So beginning of the PUP grant, it was only for students and actually you couldn't let outside members use it. But now that's expired, so anyone can use it.
So we don't have any federal constraints on how much we charge or anything like that?
Is there a list of certain equipment that might be of benefit for us to address before there are going to be people to be up in ownership? Like are there some things that drastically need some attention? And do we know what price tag associated with that?
Justin can talk to that as well. And actually, I hope you know right now, I'm in a lot of some guy, Todd, I don't know, that's looking to replace a few machines. These machines are actually, they're real fun, there's a lot of them, I don't know if you know what it was. And we have, you know, pretty good numbers in our weight training class, so it gets a lot of use. Initially, when the PUP grant started, I believe there was a, I don't think it started with fun or not yet, you have to maybe look into stuff like retaining them or being able to upgrade and maintain shares of the grant. But yeah, right now, some of the stuff started to get pretty old and beat up. So I have a few quotes right now. It's not like, we can't replace all of it.
Not all of it, but we have funds available for that, what Justin just referenced for a replacement segment. That would be something about raising the fee would allow us to replenish that to be able to do the upgrades. Like what?
Like the day there, it's not, it's a separate entity, it's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not maybe.
Right, it's just funding this way.
Yeah.
Funding isn't like, something that's continually relevant, it's supposed to be self-sustaining, right?
It is, but if there is a shortfall, the money needs to come from somewhere. So yeah, we're not saying, it's not going to be a deficit right now, but we're getting to that point where we're talking about what we're down to in terms of in numbers that we're getting through the PUP.
It should, I mean, it almost sounds like it's been a costless class because, quite honestly, now you don't have to close it if someone calls in or someone isn't right. Like it doesn't really have to be staffed. It's great that it's staffed sometimes to do some of those updates. And I completely agree, not to take hours away from someone, but I think you'll actually see, that you'll actually save money on the staffing side of it as time happens, right? But, I mean, I just think that if the community is gonna see this as a resource and there are things potentially that are pretty critical to change, I think it would be helpful to know, like, to think about what those are and like, how could we help support that? Whether it's actually dollars from the district or some support of, I mean, like, we all know that the community comes around and does crazy things, right? Like supports Athletic Foundation or, you know, the Hall of Fame and, you know, I mean, so all of those type of things. Because I think it would be nice to show a few things, maybe upgraded, to give that encouragement of like, it's open and we're on a path. And actually joining will also, I mean, each quarter will be to get another, here's the next pieces of equipment we're gonna upgrade.
Are there anything, things right now, who can think of that are like priority lists for upgrades that are?
I currently have a quote right now for a, to be specific, a leg curl machine and a chest press machine. Both of them, we have a quote for our plate loaded versus the pin loaded, which actually is easier to maintain and probably better fitness-wise. There are also, those are the two things I have quotes on. I think the next thing I would want to replace is some of the benches are certainly pretty, pretty up and that gets used by the most. But a lot of these.
What's that?
It's what I was.
But, I mean, I think the machines, because of the way they're made, I am trying to replace, I could have replaced all our machines with plate loaded machines because it's easier, it's easier to maintain, better for the fitness level. I do know that a hundred and eighty dollars is very, very cheap. I think my wife is one of the 38 current members and I know she's had some problems with her dollars and she would basically pay me more than a hundred and eighty dollars if she didn't work.
And a couple of next steps would be, we're gonna survey current numbers, find out like, you know, what is it you appreciate about, what would you like to see added for equipment? May sound like a little thing, some feedback we got was about, I didn't even know if that was in it that you can get the TV, like you can watch TV on the treadmills and stuff, but they, you know, they had commented about, someone had come in with a position of the TVs in the fitness center. You know, it's like when you ask questions, it's weird much you might hear from folks about that. So one of the next steps would be survey the members, current members. And we would certainly want to give them, we talked about that transitional stage of, you know, the ones who've already paid for a membership, how does that work? And I don't know, I think it was Mark, maybe who came up with the great idea saying, listen, if it wasn't Mark, I'm giving you credit for it, that if you want to go to the expanded hours with the FOB, you can pay now if you're going to your, you can just keep the, you know, the other hours when you would have to have someone let you in up to that point. So we had kind of, I think we thought just about everything, you know, just a lot of it in. But next step would be to get a survey on, we want to do this relatively quickly because we just didn't see any downside.
And anything to give the people in the community in the building more, it's just better for the district as a whole. Because you're more engaged, you're more committed and more, so like literally walking in the building is a really good thing for the district.
Yeah, and coming into the winter months with roads and stuff, when you talk about our community at the closest access between Rapids and Marshfield for a fitness center. You know, as far as the healthy community, we have a lot of seniors in the community that would be nice to have, have that access for them to come up with.
You know, maybe you could just throw on there like Wednesday night Old Man's League and they have to like, you get an Old Man's League and your fitness center. I don't know, we just open Wednesday night for free, but I mean, maybe it could be something to like, we've got, I mean, there's a lot of guys that come at your island.
So we're excited about the changes and think it's overdue, we'll be welcome. Okay? All right, I'll try to, so I am a member of the Pittsville Area Foundation for the Arts Board. And I'll tell you what they have done, phenomenal job looking at bringing back performances for the first time in several years. So these are all confirmed here, I have the brochure in here, they did a very nice brochure here that I know was sent out as part of my, just my weekly communication here in a couple of weeks to families. There are, you can go to the next slide to them. They have five confirmed shows right now, the magician one looks really promising for someone with young kids. But the board has done a wonderful job trying to reach out to secure artists to come in and bring this back to our fine arts center and to our community, so we're excited. Okay, so Veterans Day celebration. So Friday, the school district ran a Veterans Day recognition program, a college program. It was a, it was not quite a full day, but it was a day full of events. It involved every staff member and student in the district was what I really liked about it. And the veterans, smiling faces and lots of thank yous. First time in three years we were getting back, back in the building and it was wonderful to see. Dr. Watson was a participant, the MC, and in uniform for the, for their procedure. I did, I slipped the picture of your daughter. But what a wonderful ceremony and the participation of kids. Sam, yep, Sam, I made sure, I gotta get Sam in there because he's in the lines too with the folding of the flag.
It's a lot of time to find a low big number of hands.
He did, Dr. Watson told me that, I was in his office one day, he'd said, order the gloves. He said, I had to look everywhere to get, to fit Sam's costume, so. But no, it was a wonderful day and it was appreciated by the veterans. It was, I thought that, I heard from multiple veterans that they really appreciated the student engagement part, how the students were the leaders in a lot of this and interacting with the young, with the young students and how the high school students were a part of the presentation at the high school. So it was a fun, it was a fun day. Looking forward to continuing it into the future.
Jason, can I point out that bottom left picture?
Yes, absolutely.
That's Emma introducing her mom. She's been rehearsing for about a month. She went over her mom's military bio and we didn't put it on the agenda because I didn't want to like scare her, but she knew she's doing, you know, like we kept her introduction off the agenda. She went up there and she did a very good job of introducing her mom and highlighting her military career and translating that into what high school students would understand. And then her mom gave a speech that's the exact right length for teenage intentions been, but like, really, I figured from mom's view, like pulling in that idea of service and, you know, what her career meant for service for what that translates to for young people and it was phenomenal. But I was really proud of that one because, and I know that like at 11, 15 or so, when it was over right now, it'd be like, wait, it was lifted up your shoulders because you worry about this all the time.
Talking in front of people.
When I asked her mom what she was gonna do, she's like, you can ask her.
She would do a great, great point, so I'd say something and then something to her mom.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay. We will move on to the broken sentence agenda items. The notification, any components from our defense, especially the minutes from our, okay? Any questions, as in which is your parents? I would like to.
Any questions?
Any questions? On the other side, opposed, motion here. Okay, moving to discussion action. We have a second reading of policies by 22.73 and 371. I believe there are no changes.
No changes.
Either of those. point seven three and three seventy-one. I believe there are no changes here of those.
I would move to accept a second reading and approve the policy five twenty-two point seven three. Article radio use.
I'm sorry, given. Any discussion? On favor say aye. I oppose. Motion carried.
I will tell you on the, the nine new devices did arrive last week and Dan distributed those to the, the new digital ones. So it's ready in hands and in use right now.
Okay.
Okay.
And we have policy three seventy-one.
I'm going to motion to accept the second reading and approve of the policy three seventy-one.
I will second you.
Any discussion? On favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion carried. Next, we need to appoint the twenty-twenty-three WASB delegate for state education.
A delegate and an alternate. I know.
Well, I would recommend Mary Ann for the delegate.
You don't mind?
I don't. Should we delegate and the alternate?
Who else is going?
I am, I am. I am planning on it. Yes.
Is Chris going? He's planning on it.
Okay. He's the alternate. I think she has to experience it.
Is Laura here? Comes up.
Is Chris on your list of guesses? Then he's the alternate. That's what happens. And I hope he's listening to live stream. Hi, Chris. We love you. So I nominate Mary Ann, delegate. Chris was one alternate. Oh, there's no motions needed. Excellent. We're appointed. Yes.
All right. Okay. Then we need to talk about the April fourth, twenty-three spring election.
Yes. And so the December twenty-third is the deadline. So it's, it's Nate and Mandy's seats that would be up. And the deadline for incumbents to file a notice of non-candidacy is five PM on December twenty-third. The deadline for filing campaign registration, the statement of declaration is January third. So the non, non-candidacy notice would be December twenty-third. And then filing the campaign registration would be January third for a deadline. That's all I have.
All right. Legislative report.
Do you have anything, Mary Ann?
Well, we have an election. And we also got some sub-elections. And in the state assembly, Speaker Glass was re-elected as the speaker. And he has indicated that he is willing to increase education funding per the governor's initial request. But he has a bargaining chip and that's vouchers. So we'll have to see how this plays out. I thought it was interesting that he said, sure, we'll increase, I think, the Evers budget proposed, seven hundred more. Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah. For the next decade. Yeah. For the next, so, yeah. So we'll see.
John Forrest will be, I, I'm signed up for a, a virtual, for a Zoom meeting on Wednesday at one-thirty. He's going to give a legislative update. So I plan on participating because I think, he said he's going to have some, some news related to the budget process, which is likely the same thing Mary Ann was talking about. But I'll be participating. Saw that update from that, from the next, for December's board. We shall see.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Dan, you have any comments? Okay. And I will initiate motion to adjourn.
I'll follow.
Any discussion? On favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion carried. We adjourn.
So we're supporting, we do have the school dancer also.